Good evening. We have been in an executive session concerning Mason's Island and the town of Stonington. Do I hear a motion to get out of executive session?
Move we come out of executive session, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan. Is there discussion? No further discussion. We are now out of executive session and reconvening for our regular meeting. Seated this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, who has been missing for quite a while.
Sorry.[49.73][49.73](Laughter).
And Marge. Salinger is with us on the regular because Lynn is out. And then we have our alternates, Gary Meek, Andy Meek, and Gary Belkey. Thank you. All righty, Keith.
All right. And for the record, no motions or decisions are made during the executive session. Well, first up, we have minutes.
Yep. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of number 1705 from 9:20?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted and written.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? Let's see. Fred, you were not there, nor were you Marge.
No, I will abstain.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Minutes for 1706 on 9:27, which is our WebEx concerning the regulation rewrites.
Make a motion to approve the WebEx minutes as written.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. I think I heard a second from Fred. All those, any discussion?
Get back in the groove here.
Get, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. That's correct. Any correspondence, Keith?
Uh, no.
So we move right on to your 7D?
The administrative review items, item 7D, 71 is a request to file 90-day extension to file final subdivision Mylars for approved applications, PZ 2213SD and PZ 2220GPP, Brandon and Cynthia Flack. This was a subdivision approved a few months ago on South Anguilla. They're just asking for the first 90-day extension to file the final Mylars that state statutes allowed. This is really just in case they need it. We actually have the final Mylars here for the chairman to sign tonight, but in case things take a little longer, just asking for that extension. And these are routinely granted just because of the many steps that it usually takes to reach this point.
Okay. I don't see any problem with it. Do I hear a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Fred. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ryan? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And item 7D2, 22220ZON, Town of Stonington, zoning permit application for placement of a 9.5 times 9.5-foot granite monument to honor military veterans who have served from the town of Stonington, property located at 173 South Broad Street, Parketuck, the Stonington Police Department, assessors map 37 block 1 lot 2 zone GC 60. So this monument would be about 100 square feet and would be located in a grassed area of the police station parking lot. There is a plan done up in the staff report, and you can see the size of it. It can almost fit into one parking space, so it's not a very large monument. There's been a lot of fundraising that has gone into this. One light pole will need to be relocated somewhat to make way for it. And this area was chosen to be accessible near parking, near lighting, so it can be seen and not too close to the street, meets the setback requirements. The town is going to have the contest for artist rendering to make a better rendering of the monument.
Will it be lit at night?
I think so. I don't know.
On all eight sides?
I don't know how much lighting is proposed there.
I didn't see it in the plan.
Yeah, the plan doesn't say anything in particular.
Is there any negative impact on the handicap parking spaces right next to where the monument would be placed?
No, those will be left intact there, and there's a walkway going to it.
Okay.
And it looks like First Selectmen Cheeseborough is here, who might want to comment on the lighting issue.
State your name and address.
Hi, Daniel Cheeseborough, 14 Beach Drive. No, thank you. So right now, we don't have funding for any additional lighting. There is the light that Keith referenced that'll have to be moved that will provide kind of security lighting that's already there, but the goal is to fundraise and with the electrical conduit there to do uplighting around the perimeter, but we don't have the funding for that yet, but that is a goal ultimately.
Would it be just like cut off at midnight or on all night long, you think, or?
You could put stipulation in there for whatever you think is appropriate, or it could probably be timed with whatever the light is already at the PD with that one light there. That might be on.
You can probably see it with all the overlighting from the high school anyway.
It's very, very over there.
Well, and the police department's got to be lit up all night.
True, that's true. Okay.
If you guys have any other questions, let us know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else on that one, Keith, or?
Oh, no. Nothing else there.
No comments from the police commission on it or anything?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Item 7D3, 22222ZON Mystic Land Company LLC, M Lynch, zoning permit application for a change of use from office to retail for no other book like this bookstore, property located at 7 Roosevelt Ave., Unit 1 Mystic, assessors map 174 block 16 lot 3 zone LS5. It's proposed change of use in an existing building from financial services office to a retail used bookstore, the relocating from Route 1 in Groton. The signage will just replace existing there and conforms to the bulk and use requirements of the district. This is the small one-story, I think it's a white building next to the Henny Penny and Mystic.
I couldn't tell from the foot, there's just one sign going up?
There's one in the front, one on the side.
Ah.
On the Henny Penny side.
On the parking lot side?
The Henny Penny's parking lot.
West, okay.
Yeah.
We don't think this will be an intensification of any kind, or?
No, it's an allowed use there.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Fred. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed?
Item 7D4, 2220ZON, Town of Stonington Human Services, zoning permit application to demolish and reconstruct tennis courts and pickleball courts, property located at 176 South Broad Street, Spelman Drive, assessors map 25 block 1 lot 19-1 zone RR 80. So this is a zoning permit for the reconstruction of the tennis courts at Spelman Park. So the tennis court area, it'll be expanded by about 30 feet in length with the addition of two paddle tennis courts there. The lights will be replaced at similar heights, about 50 to 60 feet, which are already there. Application conforms to the bulk and use requirements of the RR 80 district, and there are plans in your report for what they are looking to do there. And of course, this is in the context of the middle of Spelman Park.
So you hear a motion, is that it, Keith? Do you have any other?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
A question, it wasn't clear from the site plans where the, how close they were to the streets, where the streets were in relation to the courts.
I'm struggling to see that level of detail there.
Is there someone who could answer that question?
Oh, it looks like Richard Ward's here from the Stonington Parks Department.
Would you mind?
Do you know about how far they are from the street?
I did hear your question.
Oh, do you know about how far the pickleball courts are from the street, from Spelman Drive? It's on the plans, I just can't see it.
It's about 25 feet from the right of way and about 35 feet from the left.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's fencing around this, right?
Pardon?
There's fencing around the court, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All righty.
Yeah, and that's it for old business. It's just on to the public hearing.
Okay. So we will open the public hearing, and I think everybody knows the process, but I will run through it one more time. There's a sign-up sheet by the door. If anybody would like to stand up and speak their mind about in favor, against, or general comments, then we will hear from the applicant, after the sign-up sheet, we'll hear from the applicant, and they'll have public input, that's when you can speak your mind, then there'll be rebuttal by the applicant, staff input, which will be about the same, and then board questions, including the alternates. We will close the hearing, hopefully, and come to a discussion and a vote later this evening. Seated this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Marge Salinger. And we're using our new drop-down screen. With the time on it.
Doesn't look like anything I've seen in Stonington. You're not in Kansas, huh?
This is the public hearing for whether the Planning and Zoning Commission should opt out of the accessory dwelling unit statute. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to get public input on the question, should the commission either opt out of Connecticut Public Act 2129 to maintain its current accessory dwelling unit zoning regulations, or adopt the state's more permissive standards. So to back up, I think, just a brief discussion of what an accessory dwelling unit is. So per state statutes, an accessory apartment is a separate dwelling unit that, A, is located on the same lot as the main dwelling unit of greater square footage, B, has cooking facilities, and C complies with or is otherwise exempt from any applicable building code, fire code, and health and safety regulations. So there's basically three types. There's an internal ADU or accessory dwelling unit, which is part of the main house. There's a detached garage or barn ADU, which you might find in the middle picture, something like above a garage or barn, or is a detached cottage ADU, sort of a separate smaller house in the same property of a larger house. Our current zoning regulations were updated in 2018 to allow more accessory dwelling units for homeowners. Back then, the commission removed several previous restrictions, such as requirements for public utilities and to have a 50-year-old house. Used to have a regulation that the house had to be a certain age, which made it difficult for a lot of people who wanted to do it in town. As part of that change in 2018, the town allowed ADUs in detached structures, which it never did before. And since then, about 22 accessory dwelling units have been permitted under the new regulations, which is 22 new housing units with little disruption to the community compared to 22 single-family homes. So the state public act we're talking about is Public Act 2129, which is called an Act Concerning the Zoning Enabling Act, Accessory Apartments, Training for Certain Land Use Officials, Municipal Affordable Housing Plans, and a Commission on Connecticut's Development and Future. So like the name implies, there's a lot to that act. Cover several areas with the general goals of reducing regulatory barriers to housing affordability and limiting zoning's role in racial and economic segregation. Part of this act deals with accessory dwelling units. There's several new rules that all towns have to follow with the goal of increasing housing production and affordability. So the act says that now accessory dwelling units have to be allowed as of right for any single-family house, whether it's existing or a new single-family house, with no unique permitting requirements or special fees or any kind of burdensome special regulations like that. Towns can't have a minimum house size. Towns can't have a minimum lot size. These ADUs still have to meet all the building, fire, and health codes. And here's the catch and sort of why we're here tonight, is that towns may opt out of this section of the act by following a certain process. So when you look at a comparison of the state's act and the town's regulations, there's some similarities, which is that the state and the town both don't have owner occupancy requirements. The state and town allow these in any zoning district where single-family homes are allowed. There's no requirement for family relationships. Stonington permits these mostly as of right. There's no required age of the house and no requirement for public utilities. But the main differences between the town and the state are these, where Stonington is more limiting. Stonington has a minimum house size. The house has to be at least 2,000 square feet. The lot has to meet the minimum district lot size. So if you're in the RC 120 zone with a minimum of 120,000 square foot lot size, you need that minimum lot size to be able to have an ADU. The process is a bit different because while we mostly allow them as of right, where someone doesn't have to go to the commission, our regulations do say that if you're building a new detached accessory dwelling unit from scratch, then you need a special use permit and architectural design review board review. The town also does not allow detached accessory dwelling units in front of the main house, and in fact, the commission actually submitted its own, and approved its own regulation amendment to close a loophole that allowed someone to do that. The town has some more restrictions as far as building exterior changes, like visible exterior stairs and doors, and WPCA policy is a bit stricter in Stonington, too, where they treat these differently, which doesn't quite meet the state statute. So there's pros and cons of opting out of the state act. The benefits of not opting out and abiding by the state statute are, by basically doing nothing, it's an easy way to provide a lot of much-needed rental housing in the community with few impacts. It's a financial help for homeowners, especially seniors on fixed incomes, ideal semi-independent space for extended family members, can help with public safety because easier permitting often means more legal units that follow the building and fire codes rather than people trying to sneak them in. There's benefits of opting out, too, which is that it allows the town to maintain its current regulations, which were recently updated, to expand these opportunities. And it allows you, in the town, to maintain control over your own regulations going forward. And this subject can be revisited during the comprehensive zoning regulation rewrite over the next few years, and any desired sections of the act could be added into the local regs. So it's almost like this is your chance to sort of keep your own regulations going forward if you opt out. As far as what our guidance documents say, Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development encourages exploring modification of regulations to expand use of accessory apartments, which until this act was passed, we thought we did and crossed that off the list. Excuse me, it has some other policies there about encouraging diversification of the housing stock. The recently approved Stonington Affordable Housing Plan actually has a specific goal to consider reducing minimum of 2,000 square foot total area provision from the existing regulation to expand the opportunity for accessory apartments in smaller, single-family residential properties, and to consider a creation of qualified affordable accessory apartment provision, which is basically a voluntary program of tax relief for deed restricting There was a southeastern Connecticut housing needs assessment done in 2018, which said that the region is far below housing production needed to meet demand, especially lower-cost rental housing, and ADUs are recommended as an easy first step. The state POCD also recommends things like expanding housing opportunities and improving housing choice in communities. So as far as the opt-out process, opting out requires the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. If you decide to opt out, it'll take a supermajority vote, four out of five vote, to opt out, and we'd have to post a typical notice of decision. And then the next step is that the Board of Selectmen would also have to pass a supermajority vote to opt out. So it's not just enough if you do it, the Board of Selectmen have to go along with that also. And of course, the town can only opt out of the accessory dwelling unit provisions of the public act, not the entire public act, which talks about a lot of other things. There's one exception to that, which is, there's something else that the town could opt out of in the future, which is parking standards for multifamily developments. But there's no time limit to that like there is for this. If I didn't mention it, the town has to opt out of the accessory dwelling unit provisions by January 1st, or else we are stuck with the state regulations on that. So as far as next steps, like I said, if the commission votes to opt out, we'd have to refer to the Board of Selectmen to vote. And if you vote not to opt out, there's really no further action required. The state statute will start governing beginning January 1st. And in that case, if our regulations don't match the new rules, we could change our zoning regulations to match them, either as a separate application or just roll it into the comprehensive zoning regulation rewrite. So as far as public input tonight, the question is, should the commission either, one, opt out of Public Act 2129 to maintain the town's current accessory dwelling unit regulations, or to adopt the state's more permissive standards? So that's really the only question on the table for tonight's hearing? So, yeah, you know, I think we'll just turn it over to the public, unless you have any questions.
Question. You said that there were 22 accessory units approved under our current regulations since they were adopted? Were there any that were not approved? Was it, were our regulations, is the experience that they're unduly restrictive?
It's hard to tell because if someone wasn't allowed to do it, they probably wouldn't apply in the first place. They'd probably be told that and wouldn't apply. I do know of one case where it was approved by zoning but denied by the building official because it just didn't meet the building requirements, because those two are very different. Zoning doesn't look at all those issues that the building official does.
The Public Act removes minimum lot sizes as a consideration, so then if you have a non-conforming lot, like you were saying, like the RR 120, and you wanted to put a detached accessory dwelling unit, you could, under the Public Act, is that?
Right.
Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah.
So in, without the minimum lot requirement, are there still requirements about typical like setbacks and that sort of thing?
No, I mean, the act says that you can't have setbacks for accessory dwelling units that are more strict than you'd normally do for a single-family house.
Okay, but we would still have control over the setbacks for single families?
Right, right.
As such?
Yeah.
Strong control?
They'd have to meet the regular setbacks.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
I'm sorry, will you?
Yeah, I'm all set, thanks.
Keith, are there any trends on a statewide basis since the adoption of the state act as to what other towns have done?
You know, I've seen, I think I've seen more towns opt out than decide not to opt out. I've seen more references to it in Fairfield County. It's tough to know at this stage because it's a bit early, so if there are towns that don't want to opt out, they can just do nothing. So I haven't seen much of, much in the way of towns deciding to not opt out. I've definitely seen more references to towns opting out. And I think most of them have the argument that they want to keep the power over their own regulations.
Along those same lines, it seems to me, I work in other towns doing zoning matters, it seems to me that a lot of towns have adopted accessory building, accessory dwelling unit standards. And is it a case where the towns that are opting out, are they like this town that has adopted its own organic ADU standard in most cases, or it's hard to tell?
Some of them are. From what I've seen, there's at least a few towns that have sort of been spurred on by the state act to do something, even if they do opt out. I know I read an article about Stamford where, despite its size as larger city, until now, they didn't allow accessory dwelling units at all. And this has been a very contentious issue there with lawn signs everywhere about whether they should opt out or not. And I'm not even sure if a decision was made there yet, but I think the way they were going is that they were going to opt out, but they were going to create their own regulations to finally allow accessory dwelling units.
Lastly, this is more a statement than it is a question for Keith, but in the enabling statutes that allowed towns to create planning and zoning agencies and adopt zoning regulations and adopt subdivision regulations, the overarching principle of all of it is that it provides for the orderly development of the town. And then the state comes along with a statute like this that is totally contrary to planning and says there are no minimum lot sizes, there are no minimum dwelling sizes, and there are no standards. So I, to me, the town's regulation makes a lot more sense because it does provide for the orderly development of the town. It does provide some standards. And I think that protects the people that want to do an ADU, and it protects all the people around that might live adjacent to an ADU as well. So I'm in favor of our own regulation because I believe it provides for the orderly development of the town, whereas the state's regulation is contrary to all principles of planning that, you know, adopt guidance for the orderly development of town. I think it's contrary to planning.
Well, I was hoping during our regulation rewrite, we might fine-tune what we already have approved in 2018 and make things a little bit more. have approved in 2018 and make things a little bit more permissible. That's what I was hoping. Any other questions for Keith?
Of the 22 units, has there been like a path, was it 20 in the first year and after it got up?
You know, I'm not sure. I sort of went through and counted them up, and I didn't notice a pattern like that.
Yeah, my fear is if it was 20, then none.
Right, right, if it was sort of pent up demand. It seems to me that it's pretty even. And, you know, if anyone's looking for a more detailed comparison of the state versus town regulations, there's more details in the, in the staff report and the memo in there. Yeah, but I think that's about it here. And if you do vote to opt out, there's a draft resolution in the staff report, too, that just has the wording for it, but.
Very helpful presentation, Keith. Thank you as usual.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
First up on the public is Ben Tamski. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. First of all, I would like to thank Keith for his very helpful summary of the changes that PA 29-21-29 would bring about. As usual, he frames the questions before you very succinctly and gives those of us from the public a very simple framework from which to comment. As one who opposed the wholesale overhaul of our zoning code that the former Affordable Housing Plan proposal envisioned, I believe that the removal of burdens to construction of ADUs could actually be a positive first step in promoting housing affordability. Going beyond what the PZC has already done to relax these regulations and letting the entire statute take effect would be a modest first step to increase housing density and see if the result is positive in the creation of a more affordable housing model. I think that once the potential for new housing structures is created, some safeguards will need to be put in place as well. New units and added density will do nothing for our affordable housing stock if they're immediately turned into short-term rentals. It appears the statute foresees this problem as well. Section 7B states, quote, "That nothing in this section shall be in derogation of the municipality to prohibit or limit the use of accessory apartments for short-term rentals or vacation stays," end quote. So it is my belief that this commission should adopt some reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals to ensure that the new ADUs are not built out with that purpose in mind. Encouraging the construction of new STRs will only work against the intent of this statute, which is clearly intended to promote housing affordability. A simple way that the commission could begin the process of regulating STRs is through a text amendment that defines short-term rentals as being owner-occupied and then allowing them as an accessory use in all residential zones. It is time to think beyond the big-box model of affordable housing and look for small-scale answers to the problem. Adopting Public Act 21-29 could be a small step in that direction. Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Leslie, and I can't quite catch the last name. Sorry. Arsenal? Driscoll?
Hi, it's Leslie Driscoll.
Ah, Driscoll.
I live at 59 William Street in Pocatuck. I thank you, Keith, for such an eloquent explanation of this. I was a little bit in the dark for some of these, some of these points before I came in. But I would, I am really optimistic about opting out and allowing Stonington to continue the work of developing their own zoning and planning for the town for ADUs. I've seen, as a member of the Architectural Review Board, that when the state institutes development mandates like 830G regulations for affordable housing, then we just, we don't have any planning say in that. So I would encourage the commission to keep it in the town, and you guys decide what's best. I would, would say maybe reduce the house square footage size. 2,000 is pretty big. My house on William Street is about 14.5. It's pretty small, but it's got a big lot. So just a thought. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Leslie. Rick Newton.
Rick Newton, 32 Meadow Brook Lane, Mystic. In general, I'm a person that likes lesser regulations, and so I'd be leaning towards adopting the state's more permissive standards. We have a workforce housing issue because there isn't any. I have two friends that recently had their landlords increase their rents, and these are, you know, college-educated, have decent jobs. They can't find a new rental because basically we have, we've turned all our rentals into single, I mean, short-term rentals. And we don't build houses for, you know, on lots, you know, smaller lots that are in the $250,000 or $300,000 price range. You know, everything that comes before you, you guys, it's like, you know, half a million-dollar houses. And workforce people cannot afford those. So I think anything we can do to make affordable housing more available, we should do. I agree with Ben that we definitely need something in, whatever you decide to do, we need something that says these ADUs cannot be used for short-term rentals. But something that, you know, I would have liked to see is a map of what properties qualify under both the state program and under our regulations. I believe that the majority of where ADUs are probably allowed under our regulations are in the northern sections of the town where the big lots are. The POCD had a, I believe it had a emphasis on adding housing in the villages, towards the villages. And typically, from what I can tell, the housing, the properties near the villages are small lots. I mean, my lot is zoned for 20,000 square feet, and it's less than a quarter acre. So, you know, there aren't going to be many ADUs near the villages. And, you know, if we want people to drive less and bike more and walk more, you know, we're going to have to look at where we want to have these ADUs. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rick. Next up, Laura Graham.
When I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Laura Graham, 2 Ma Street, Pocatuck. Having spoken out against the EDC's draft Affordable Housing Plan, I am very interested in tonight's topic of accessory dwelling units. My friend Janice Mink spoke during that meeting about the need for craft affordable housing, the word "craft" being used as in craft beer. In other words, small-scale, local affordable housing in contrast to the large-scale, corporate, high-density, new-build, affordable housing projects championed by the EDC. Public Act 2129 seems to address just this. By loosening the regulations on the ADUs, the state appears to be changing strategy away from the blunt force of Statute 830G in favor of allowing housing stock to grow organically and slowly, one family at a time, within well-established neighborhoods and in scale to the pre-existing homes. These new EDUs would, at least in theory, be owner-occupied, and one would expect that they would enjoy excellent maintenance. With few exceptions, poor maintenance seems to frequently plague the large, high-density, 830G affordable housing developments in our community. Issues of mold and frequently broken elevators are some of the problems recently mentioned in the newspapers. As long as there is some provision so that these ADUs don't all turn, as Ben Tamski mentioned, into short-term rentals, I think ADUs could be an excellent homegrown way to increase quality affordable housing stock in Stonington. If there were to be some sort of tax incentive to offer those who would deed them affordable, we could even count them towards that Shangri-La state goal of 10% deeded affordable housing. ADUs are historically natural way for affordable housing units to occur. In my neighborhood in Pocatuck in historic Westerly, many of the homes built in the 1800s already have a smaller second house in the back of the property. Historically, families have liked to live together in multi-generational groupings, so these double houses made sense, and I believe they still make sense today. One friend mentioned that the more affluent in our town would love the opportunity to build guest houses on their property, even if they never use them, just to increase the value of their properties when they go to sell. Certainly, each area of town will react differently to a relaxation of the restrictions. My friend's point leads me to ask you tonight what you think might be some of the unintended consequences if the town chooses not to opt out of Public Act 2129. Listening to what you said, Mr. Sheehan, I do agree, though. I think that having control over what happens in our town is really important, but I would encourage that if we do maintain control, that we would look again, as Leslie mentioned, the lot size, and try to make it easier, waiving fees and the like, to make it easier for families. I think there are a lot of extended families, especially in my neighborhood in Pocatuck, who would like the opportunity to be able to have an elderly relative live close to them, or even, you know, a family member who's trying to save money towards a deposit on one of these more expensive houses that we've grown to be accustomed to in Stonington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carlene.
I had to change the word.
You're editing on the fly?
Yeah.
It's kind of risky, isn't it?
You have something to project for us, Carlene?
No.
No?
I have not computerized.
We put in the projector and everything.
That is a good idea, and I agree with that point.
That's okay, I'm only jazzy.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, I'll just do this. You have proposed, and not voted, which is the word I wrote, to opt out of Public Act 21-29, which is specifically permitted in the statute, and thus have scheduled this public hearing to hear from the public. If you and the Board of Selectmen act favorably, your resolution will state why you are proposing to do so with these two reasons. One, in 2018, recognizing the benefit to the community, the town liberalized its zoning regulations regarding the permitting of accessory dwelling units. Two, the Planning and Zoning Commission is in the process of comprehensively rewriting its zoning regulations, and this process may result in additional changes that further the goals of Public Act 21-29. I know most of you as commissioner, commission members, have attended the three virtual rewrite meetings so far with a consultant hired by the town. Very few other members of the public have been in attendance besides myself. If they had been listening to Project Manager Francisco Gomes, who is an AICP from FHI Studio, that they would know that he, Mr. Gomes, puts great emphasis on definitions and will be making sure our regulations are meeting state statutes and case law. So I am quite confident that there will be, that there will be much more added to our regulations and even some tweaking of our current accessory dwelling units regulation. For example, I suspect he would suggest that our accessory dwelling unit regulation be renamed to accessory apartments, which is the term used in state statutes. The Planner's Report includes a comparison of our local regulation to the state regulation. He cites a few instances where our current regulation does not comply. I have no doubt that this will be a topic of discussion when Mr. Gomes gets to re-rewing zoning regulation 7.1 with you. I believe it will be up to you as commission members to decide what will and will not be added to our regulations. I wonder how many people have here tonight, or in the public out there, have even read the 35 pages of the state statutes, the link of which was provided in the legal notice, the agenda, and in the staff report. To the concern that accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments could turn into short-term rental units, you might be surprised, maybe not now that two other people said it, that Statute 21-19 specifically allows the commission to prohibit or limit the use of accessory apartments for short-term rentals or vacation stays. And that is on, that is item seven on page 14 of the, on page 14 of 28 in the staff report. So when the final version of our new regulations is presented at a public hearing, let's be sure that that provision is included. Sorry, I forgot to turn the page. Our accessory dwelling unit regulations cover accessory units that are included within or are attached to an existing home, and also cover detached accessory units that would be built on the same lot as an existing home. There may be many more things included in Statute 21-19, some of which the town may want to consider at some future point in time. For now, let's go with opting out and see how it goes. I think there is a great, this is a great start, particularly because you are in the process of rewriting our regulations. Let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater, as the saying goes. New regulations can be added later, even if we opt out now. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlene. I just would like to reemphasize what you just said is this comprehensive review rewrite is comprehensive. We have had only two meetings, the first one was introductory, and there are 16 more once a month, 16 more. So the public has ample opportunity to tune in, and I'm not sure there's a time for them to be able to speak on those meetings, but they are open to the public.
No, there will definitely be public input sessions, public hearings down the road.
We will have workshops. Right.
Right, at a later date.
Yeah.
Word word.
Yes, Ben, please use the mic, please step up and use the microphone.
Ben Tamski. I have been meaning to tune into those meetings, but since I haven't been notified by Gail, I'm on the list for receiving the regular meeting agenda, but apparently not for that one, but I will try to start this month. Shouldn't there be a public comment period, even during those meetings?
There will be workshops, I believe, once we get.
Right, do you mean at every meeting, at all meetings?
Yeah, I mean, isn't every public meeting supposed to have a public comment period?
I mean, we don't even at these ones if there's not a public hearing, but we can see, we can talk about if we should, we should do that at these.
It really is a work session and not a finished product. And when it's finished, and it's going to be finished in two stages.
Phase one and phase two.
Then there will be opportunity for workshops and public hearings on the content. Then there will be opportunity for workshops and public hearings on the content. The object here is to rewrite the present regulations without changing them at the first phase.
Oh, well, that reassures me.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, doesn't mean they won't change, because there's a lot of things in our current regulations that are not compliant with state regulations.
I understand, but I would think that if there's wholesale changes made, that the public should be able to weigh in.
Plenty of opportunity.
Yeah, so there'll be public hearings then, and then there'll be, we'll go into the second phase, which is to introduce changes that we think are desirable, and then there'll be another series of public hearings at that point to hear what the public thinks of it. So it's a long process.
But also during that process and before it gets to a public hearing, there may be members of the public that have suggestions for those changes, or changes that commission members and the consultant haven't thought of, so.
What's the harm, what's the harm in that? I mean, there's no, I don't see any harm.
Harm in what? Having a public comment?
Harm in adding an opportunity for citizens to speak.
It's not like there are 50 people there, so.
No.
We'll take it under consideration.
I can only see a benefit to it. I really, I really, we have a lot of very well-informed citizens that follow planning and zoning, and I think we should take advantage of that and leverage that and seek their input throughout the process, and it could open our eyes.
Is there any more comment from the public this evening that haven't signed up on the sheet? No more?
No, just want to point out, we did receive one written comment from Elizabeth Stern, Lord Silroad, who recommends in her comments, sticking with the state statute.
Adopting it?
Yeah, or not opting out.
Do you have any rebuttal?
You know, changing the, reducing the minimum house size, I think of all the things we have in our regulations, seems to be like the big low-hanging fruit, like people, like Beechel, people mentioned. And, you know, I guess I'm getting old. I've been in this town 17 years or so, and, you know, over that time, I've seen a lot of changing viewpoints over this. I think back when I started in this town around 2005, there was a lot of hesitation at doing something like just allowing accessory dwelling units in any additional way with fears that neighborhoods would be overrun with traffic and people would be sort of crowded in them, and there would be a real negative drag on the neighborhood. And I think over time, you know, people have realized that they are a definite benefit to the community as far as the housing choice that they offer, which basically all the speakers here tonight spoke to, whether they recommended opting out or not. So just a general comment over the changing view of this issue, but no other real rebuttal.
Any questions for Keith? Discussion? Chuck?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Again, I take a very well-done presentation by our planner this evening. I think Ben described it very well in his speech. It allows you to assess a very complex regulation by the state and establishes a framework within which to review it and make informed decisions.
Questions from the alternates for Keith or discussion?
I just, I just want to express my opinion that I think that not opting out would be my preferred course of action on this. And, you know, as Chuck was saying, or was kind of explaining, that this felt like a rejection of planning in some ways. And I can see what you mean, but I think what I infer from the fact that this public act even exists is that the best-intentioned planning has fallen very short when it comes to affordable housing. And I'm in favor of going with the state, the state plan, and just kind of resetting that as a new baseline. It doesn't preclude moving forward and still having some ability to plan, but it does set a new baseline that we then work from. There are still going to be ways to control what happens in the town. I don't think we're giving up all control. We are certainly giving up some, but I think the trade-off is that a major course correction is needed.
Thank you, Andy. Gary?
You know, I'd be in favor of opting out. I think the timing is perfect with the zoning rewrite. I think here the community, you know, that's what those workshops are for, to get the community's opinion on this and really see what the community wants on phase two. I mean, it's going to be a couple of years, but it's important to find out, so goal we have now, you know, don't do the state opt out, and then tweak it and make it better.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm kind of, I'm torn. I definitely see Andy's point, but I do feel like since we're in the middle of all the rewriting now, it seems like a really good opportunity to make some corrections and make it fit kind of for our town. So I'm kind of, I'm torn a little bit right now.
There's no reason why I can't adopt a lot of the state's suggestions and input into the rewrites. No comments, Fred?
None.
Okay. Are you motion to close?
May I just say that?
Oh, here you are.
I am afraid, the only reason I am not reassured by that is I am afraid that as things go through the public hearing phase, those things could get shot down, and what we have here is an opportunity to ensure that they cannot be shot down.
Good point.
I think that's my last thing to say.
Okay. Good point.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Fred. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting closed. People want to sit and think about it for a little while?
We don't have to make a decision tonight, correct, Mr. Chairman?
No. Do I keep it open and...
I think we should consider what we've heard tonight.
Okay.
So would this then be an action item at the next public meeting?
Yeah, we'd have it on for the next meeting.
Or decision.
Right. And then, you know, assuming we decide the next one, it gives the Board of Selectmen a couple of months to still, still make their decision.
Yeah, we still have until January.
January's, yeah. Do you have to be like 30 days before January for the Board of Selectmen?
No, I mean, I'd have to read the statute to see if, you know, you have to advertise the notice of decision in the paper.
I'm sure.
By then, if you're cutting it real close, but other than that, there's not a time limit other than January.
Okay.
So that would, I mean, that argues for not putting it off very long.
Right.
Yeah, like the next.
Do this on the 18th.
Yeah.
So we make a motion to continue the hearing to the 18th?
Oh, did we, did you already vote to close the hearing?
Yes.
We did.
Okay. All right. So it's just the decision?
Yes. Is that a motion, Ryan?
Make a motion to postpone the decision until the next hearing on the 18th of October.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I think I'm opposed, but that doesn't matter. Let's put it this way, I'm prepared to move ahead tonight, but I can wait.
Any other discussion in front of the commission this evening?
No.
No. Do I hear a motion to close this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Fred, thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you.